I would like to call this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier. Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner. Councilman Dennis.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's total on the bills are five hundred and two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and ten cents.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Consent agenda has been approved. Remarks of visitors?
We have none, sir.
I'd like to take just a a few seconds of personal time here to introduce to the councilman and to the audience. My daughter Diana. And my granddaughters, Halia, Mahialani, and Kavenna, who are visiting all the way from Maui, Hawaii. Thank you for that opportunity.
They can do this.
I'd like to have Chief Lewis step up in front of the podium, please. I'd like to present this to Chief Timothy Lewis. Chief of Police from November of nineteen ninety-eight through April of two thousand twenty-three. Assistant Chief from October of nineteen ninety-five till October of nineteen ninety-eight. And employed by the city of Festus from December of nineteen eighty-two till April of twenty twenty-three. Forty-one years as a police officer in this city.
I'll keep this brief. Thank you very much. It's been a humbling experience. Few people I'd like to thank. Bill Pagano for trusting me. As a young kid out of DeSoto, right out of college, he took a big risk, bigger than I think I'd have taken. Ron Skaggs for mentoring me and teaching me how to, how to run a successful police department. And the officers that I've had the luxury of working with. That was all what helped me become a chief, but I couldn't have done it without the support of the mayor and the councils we've had since then. Look on the I can't name everybody that's been involved. There's been so many. But I want to thank you for supporting the police department, making me feel welcome. Festus is my home. I'm from DeSoto, but I've been reminded of that for forty-one years. So I tell people, yeah, prick me and I bleed green. But Festus is my home. And I love it. I've worked hard. I've had a an ambition on where I thought the police department should be and what we should be. We've come from some pretty horrible backgrounds in the police department. My goal was to get it to be one of the best agencies in the state, and I think I overdid it. I think we've become the best agency in the state. But I couldn't do it without the officers to work for me. So the officers that are behind me, including Captain Wendell, are the ones you should thank for doing the job. You know, I'm the one that gets the information, passes it down to them and say, figure it out. But most of all, thank you for forty-one years. It's been a wonderful ride and I wouldn't change a thing. Thank you very much.
Now I'd like to call Captain Wendell to him in front of the podium, please.
It is my opportunity to be able to swear in Captain Wendell as the chief of police, city of Festus.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Doug Wendell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
For the office of police chief.
For the office of police chief.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Affecting cities of this class.
Affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances of.
And the ordinances of.
The city of Festus, Missouri.
The city of Festus, Missouri.
And faithfully demean myself.
And faithfully demean myself.
In office.
In office.
So help me God.
So help me God. One more.
Your day, pal. Take advantage.
Ready, look this way. We're gonna do a couple. Ready, one, two, three. Let's do another one. Ready, one, two, three.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Brian's in German.
Chief, go ahead and, and turn that name tag down. The Brian Weiner, who does these at his shop, is in Germany this week. And so we don't have a name tag yet.
We will for the name.
But we will have. Okay. Do we have any bids for this evening?
No, sir.
On tonight's agenda, we have bill forty-seven eighteen. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven eighteen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, amending chapter five fifteen of the code of ordinances of the city of Festus to incorporate the city's guidelines governing work in the city right-of-way currently found in five fifteen appendix A into the existing sections of chapter five fifteen and enacting new sections, five fifteen point two one oh, five fifteen point two two oh, five fifteen point two three oh, and five fifteen point two four oh. Prohibiting work in city right-of-way at certain times. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven eighteen is now open for discussion. Could I have the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council. Mark Harris, our building and planning director, along with Brian Malone, our city attorney, have worked on trying to update our section of the code that deals with specifically contractors working within the right-of-way. Brian, I don't know if you want to elaborate upon that.
Sure. We were asked after the damage to one of the city's water lines last fall to take a look at the city's requirements for work within the right-of-way. Mark drew up some, some standards and some proposed changes. We took a look at those in light of the existing ordinances governing work in the right-of-way, which are generally in chapter five fifteen of the city code. Some years ago, there was an appendix A added to chapter five fifteen that added some additional requirements to working in the right-of-way. And in the course of this, we kind of discovered that there was some inconsistencies, or at least some areas that needed interpretation as to which standard governed, whether chapter five fifteen or the appendix A to chapter five fifteen. So we, we drafted this ordinance to incorporate the changes requested by Mr. Harris and to kind of reconcile what was in appendix A with the rest of chapter five fifteen. And that's what this ordinance does.
Is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven eighteen for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Don't move.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven eighteen for the second time in title only?
Bill number forty-seven eighteen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, amending chapter five fifteen of the code of ordinances of the city of Festus to incorporate the city's guidelines governing work in city right-of-way currently found in five fifteen appendix A into the existing sections of chapter five fifteen and enacting new sections, five fifteen point two one oh, five fifteen point two two oh, five fifteen point two three oh, and five fifteen point two four oh. Prohibiting work in city right-of-way at certain times. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and establishing an effective date. Councilman Tenon. Councilman Cook. Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven eighteen has passed. We also have bill forty-seven nineteen on the agenda. Would the clerk, please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven nineteen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, approving the updated planned unit development overlay for thirteen sixty-one Shapiro, incorporating exhibit A attached tier two as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Could I have a staff report, please?
Just thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the Shapiro Road Larry Goodwin Project. They've proposing a automotive repair center, Schaefer Automotive, at the lot next doors to the south of Tanglefoot. That's not one of the original uses in there, and they, it's a currently zone B two with the P U D overlay. And so this would amend the overlay to allow for motor vehicle service, which is what auto repair falls under. It's normally restricted to be for. I believe we have examples of what they're proposing. It's a multimillion dollar project. It includes a body shop, electronic vehicle service station, as well as a car wash. Also believe representatives are here. If there are any questions, be directed.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Greg and Matt or Mark helped me with this because I'm having a hard time because when that whole project was originally created, we've changed the P U D several times and it's already correct.
That's correct.
And then with Texas Roadhouse, the paint's not even dry and we're already sacrificing one of our last lots that was originally designed for retail to now we almost got completely light industrial use over there. Is that a fair statement?
For the most part, yes. Lot seven and seven A were both designated for the same use within the P U D, which was commercial retail, office park, or I believe also religious, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Correct. So obviously, the, the overlay amendment is needed to go to this higher, more intensive use.
So then, if we do this, though, we're, we're losing our lot. We're losing our potential retail space and the city's growing and we don't have much more land that we can actually do something like this for. I'm having a hard time. So convince me and come down to my level so I understand how this benefits the city. I know it's a development, but we're sales tax driven and we designed it originally for retail. That was supposed to be our home run for gravel which plus our version of it.
Hmm. Yeah. So it certainly does deviate from what the original proposal, and that goes all the way back to twenty eighteen, if I'm not mistaken. That the developer originally proposed, and there have been a number of amendments through that, but, and that doesn't necessarily that is not a a coin in the, in the, in the pot there as far as whether or not you can or cannot do another change. It's specific to this one lot. It is the, it is one of the last, if not the last lots that were designated for retail development there. The proposed use is more intensive than what the underlying zoning is, which is B two. So there, yeah, there's some inconsistencies, for sure.
So is there any other discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Would this be considered the definition of spot zoning? And it has to go hand in hand with the P U D to even make it work?
Well, the, the main reason we have on larger scale developments, you have a P U D, Kevin, is to give you the developer some flexibility as far as the uses within the development. We have accommodated some changes in the past to, I guess, further add to that flexibility. So it, it doesn't require a zoning change, but it does require an amendment to the overlay. The overlay is the designation of all the lots that are within that single development. Each lot inside the development has a description of what the intended uses are. And again, the intended use on lot seven was originally commercial retail, office park and religious, and this is obviously a use different than that.
So we wouldn't be getting ourselves in a position that someone could say that's not fair in your spot zoning it, but you're saying the zoning isn't really changing, right?
Yeah, the, the underlying zoning stays the same, which is the B two commercial district. It's the overlay, the, the plan unit development overlay. When we say P U D, that's what that stands for, plan unit development. The, the amendment is to the P U D and not to any of the zoning.
Okay. Little, little hard to understand. Lot two it, so.
Is there any other discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I guess my question would be the perception of the other businesses that are there that were maybe anticipating being next door to a retail space or a restaurant or something along those lines, and now they're next door to a car repair place. I mean, is that? I mean, potentially, is that going to be a problem?
I, I received.
The general aesthetic of the area, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Right. I had received calls from Wideman that has the very top lot across at the very top of the hill. And then the owner's lot five, which is the storage. I received calls from them asking, you know, what, when they saw the signage going up, what was going on? I explained it to them and they had, I told them to show up to me if they had any concerns. And they were, they've had no concern.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, is there any councilman that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven nineteen for the second time in title only.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read the bill forty-seven nineteen for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven nineteen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, approving the planned unit development overlay, updated plan unit over updated planned unit development overlay for thirteen sixty-one Shapiro, incorporating exhibit A attached tier two as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Cook.
No.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
No.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Right. That's a, that's a four-two.
Four-two, yeah. So we need a majority.
So the ordinance fails.
Bill forty-seven nineteen has failed.
Thank you all.
And they can do that, right?
Moving right along, new business.
If you look at the calendar, our next council meeting is set for May eighth, that, that Monday, second Monday, is also the observance of Truman Day. With council's permission, we would like to move the council meeting to the Tuesday, May ninth instead.
I'll entertain a motion to move the council meeting to Tuesday, May ninth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Old business.
None, sir.
Councilman Boyer.
Take us time to congratulate Chief Dill and Captain Pippen. Glad to see that work's going to be started pretty soon on this Frost Park demolition. Finally got the hammer to come over there and disconnect. Good. What's it gonna take to drop the speed limit a little bit on Biffa Street? They're flying down through there. I know we got thirty mile an hour there. I mean, I think it should be like a twenty, maybe a twenty-five.
Did you the, the traffic calming plan and see where that fits into that? Something we can take a look at.
Okay. Sounds good. They, they're flying down through there pretty good and got a lot of people that pulls out on them side roads right there.
Do the stop sign there in South Adams, or is it all the way over to South?
It, they cover pretty much that whole area through there. You know, they build up their speed from the stop sign and they're wanting to get, you know.
Well, we can do it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Councilman Cook.
Chief Lewis, happy retirement. Hope to see you around the ball fields. Future chief, because your notes start till Sunday. Congratulations, and that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Councilman Tenon.
Congratulations, chief and Captain Pippen and don't really know what to say about Tim, so congratulations on your retirement. I thought the I guess it was the Renaissance deal over the weekend went well. It was very crowded on Main Street.
Viking Festival.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I saw a lot of Vikings. Somebody called the Renaissance, so excuse me. But that looked very successful and a lot of people there and other than that, that's all I have.
Councilman Vins.
Congratulations, Doug. And to our acting police chief, Tim. And nothing else, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Templeton.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you to Tim, who made his escape very quickly. He doesn't care. Congratulations, Captain. Very well deserved. Just to, to go on the back of the Viking Festival, it's not every day I drive down Central and get passed by a Viking walking down with a sword, but it's, by all accounts, was a wonderful event and ran smoothly. So it's nice to see those things come year after year. That's it.
Yes. Thank you. And of course, I'd congratulate Captain Wendell. And Councilman Dennis.
I wanted to say aloha and mahalo to your family. I hope that came out properly. For visiting our small town. I have visited your island and I find it to be wonderful. Thank you, Tim. I'm a little teary about you leaving. I've worked with you. You're a good man and a good chief. And Doug, you will do as well. You will do as well. I'm very proud of both of you. I've got a lot of compliments on the cleanup around town. And the people are very thankful for situations they've been in with big trees and limbs. And I think it was a job well done. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'll start again. Congratulations, Chief Wendell. I was very proud to be able to appoint you as chief of police. Tim, we go back a long way. A long, long way. When, when I first started as a police officer over in Crystal, being on midnights on a Saturday night or a Sunday night and knowing that then Corporal or Sergeant Lewis was on midnight shift over here in Festus. I knew that if things turned sideways that he would have my back. We've known each other for a long time. And congratulations on your retirement. And I know you will enjoy it. Congratulations to you and your family. You're welcome. Is there anything else anybody would like to say? At this time, we're going to have to go into closed session. go into closed session. For matters relating to R S M O six ten point zero two one legal. And for leasing purchase. And, uh. R S M O dot zero two one. Paragraph twelve for documents relating to a negotiated contract. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook? Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton?
Yes.
Councilman Dennis?
Yes.
Councilman Vins?
Yes.
Councilman Tenon?
Yes.
We are in closed session. We'll take five minute break.